Hello everyone, thank you. We'll now commence the Council's meeting, the 10th of November 2022. Item one, we acknowledge the Bundlemoat people, the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today, in view of respect to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island people who are present today. Item two, the attendance record will be apologies from Councillor Stubbs, Councillor Westerman and Councillor San Tuzi. Leave with absences there at the end. Item three, declarations of members' conflict of interest. Do any members have any? Could you please declare them to me? Thank you. Fair enough. Right, thank you. Item four, reports from council offices. The first one is 4.1.1, the sale or lease of the strategic council-owned state government's SA Hydrogen Jobs Plan. What I would like to do at the acceptance of the is to suspend meeting procedures, and we will have a presentation from the CEO and outside the council, just to give us some information and background around this particular report. Would that be okay? Would someone like to move it with suspension? Say about half an hour for 30 minutes. So that's been moved by Councillor Marshall and seconded by Councillor Pond. Thank you. Can I have a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, thank you councillors, that's carried. I'll now hand over to Justin to see.
... through the report, just to provide context in terms of why this matter has been brought to council at this point in time, the purpose of the report, and to give my support to the decision that is before council tonight. The purpose of the report is to, if council approves, for council to authorize the CEO to negotiate and execute an option agreement with the South Australian Government for the state to acquire council-owned lands, parcels in two sites, and I'll talk about that a bit more shortly, in order to say to secure investment certainty over these sites, they're an integral component of the SA Hydrogen Jobs Plan developments. In summary, the council has received a number of reports over a number of months about the state's strategic projects, including the SA Hydrogen Jobs Plan, and back in July of this year, council embargoes on any utilisation, sale or transfer of council-owned lands in the proximity of the locations that were under assessment by the state government for the office of Hydrogen Power, those potential sightings, locations for their hydrogen power station, electrolyser and storage facilities. Over a period of time, the Office of Hydrogen Power SA had completed their site assessment using multi-criteria assessment process to look at suitable sites to accommodate that facility. And recently, I have written to council identifying a number of parcels of land that is of interest to the state for that purpose. Specifically, the two certificates of title that the state are looking at, one is located at the intersection of Point Bligh Turnoff, so actually turn off of Lincoln Highway onto Point Bligh Portnife Road. Immediately to your left, there's an 8.6 hectares piece of land at that site. And then the second certificate of title is Deposit Plan 79748, which comprises two portions of lands that the state is interested in, 238 hectares, which is the collectively referred to or known as the Waihele industrial estate, lease area number three, and 396 hectares, which is north of the Col Tama Solar Development Area, which is referred to as lease area number one. Both of these sites are strategically located, adjacent to relevant infrastructure, including the steelworks, satisfy the multi-criteria assessment taken by this state through a site selection expert panel, which did include participation from the council as part of that review. On the 28th of October, the state wrote to council expressing its interest to acquire those pieces of land and requested a council decision on or before the 15th of November in order for the state to be able to take to the market in early June a global tender call for development partners for the construction of those facilities. In order to meet that timeline, the administration responded by undertaking a number of activities, including the appointment of a pravity and prudential advisor, Mr Mark Booth from BRM Advisory, who is actually online tonight. And we've received an independent report from Mark and later in this introduction, I'll ask Mark to provide the key findings of his review, as well as legal advisors to review all governance procedures to ensure that great adherence and appropriate independent oversight in terms of the councils and committees' interests in relation to this transaction. In addition, we have sought an independent valuation through the Vale General, noting that it's not the Vale General, that department that is doing the valuation, they are the ones that have contracted out to get that independent valuation done by, to a planning of valuers who have got relevant experience and knowledge in commercial slash industrial valuations of this nation. Through the process, the administration, with advice from our advisors, developed a term sheet for the purchase of discussions with the state, and that culminated in the state providing an option agreement for council's consideration, which is included in the general papers at an extra number G, noting that that is very much a draft options agreement. It does require some more work, which I'll talk to in a minute. In addition, the state furnished the council with a draft letter of collaboration, which is an extra H, which is a favorable response to council's request to be able to partner with and work with the state government in terms of delivering significant socio-economic benefits, not only to our city and region, but to the state. Given the timing of the need for a decision by the state being in the caretaker period or very close thereafter, council's administration contacted the Minister for Local Government and the Honourable Jeff Roll MP in order to obtain an exemption under the Local Government Elections Act in order to make a designated decision, and the minister's approval of that exemption is provided as attachments at D or next to number four. I'll back to the recommendations shortly, which I want to walk through, but just in terms of providing a little bit more information. An extra A provides all of the former council resolutions in relation to the state's strategic projects, including the SA Hydrogen Jobs Plan, noting that we have been on a journey with these projects. In addition to, actually I might, I'll keep going, sorry. One of the key focus areas for the administration has been to be able to demonstrate that we get good public value from the transaction and the disposal of council's asset in form of land to meet both the prudential requirements under the Local Government Act as well as our asset disposal policy. In order to be able to ultimately determine that good public value has been derived, we've sought independent valuations, as I've mentioned before, and we have also requested and received from the state government valuations that they used during the negotiations with the seven companies associated with the land adjacent Portnife. As a consequence, when we get to the point of actually making a decision regarding whether to sell or lease the land, which will be at a future date, we'll be able to provide a report to council in terms of the value proposition of the two options and be able to quantify the financial, social and economic benefits that council will derive from the different types of, or the transaction at that point in time. Just in relation to the draft options agreement, there are a number of matters that do require some further negotiation. So when we get to the resolutions shortly, I'll talk through that. But before I go to the resolutions, I might just ask Mark Booth to advise councillors with a high-level summary of the work that is done, the findings of his review, and probably as some preamble, Mark, if you wouldn't mind, just a brief explanation of some of the history and experience that you have doing this type of review for councils.
Thank you, Justin, and thank you, members, for the opportunity to meet you this evening.
One second, I just need to get a bit more volume.
How's that? Is that any better?
March left, we'll have to, there, there you go.
Okay. I've, my own experience in preparing prudential reports is quite extensive. We've prepared reports for the City of Adelaide on the 88 O'Connell Street development, the Central Market Arcade development and the east-west bikeways. We've worked with all of the G6 councils, the six largest councils in the state, on prudential reports. We've prepared reports for Adelaide Plains Council on a strategic land acquisition, which was quite confidential, very similar to the negotiations this way, except council was buying the land. The City of Marion was involved in a strategic land acquisition as well, also conducting conference. So we're quite familiar with this process and the process of disclosing, if you like, information at the end of a journey rather than at the start of a journey, as councils often do with their community consultation processes. The, is that clear enough, Justin?
It's faint, but I'm not sure we're going to be up as well. Just on your laptop, for sure.
It's 100 on mine as well, yeah.
It's a bit, it's a bit doubt that will disperse the end.
It's clear online according to some of the comments that have come through, but apologies. Just in terms of my prudential findings, if you like, it's obviously an important project for the City of Waihele and the broader region. My role is to make sure that council turns its mind to the issues that are set out in the Local Government Act in section 48, and also in your prudential management policy, which largely mirrors the Act. Because this project, you don't necessarily need a prudential report, but it's a matter of good practice to look at those issues when you're making a decision of this magnitude in any event. So I think it's, it's been prudent to do so. As you can see from my report, you're largely compliant with the requirements of the Act and your policy. The areas where you're not compliant are really because we're waiting for this valuation to come through. And you can't understand the financial implications of something until you have that valuation. Notwithstanding that, you're actually selling and not buying or leasing if you don't sell. So the financial impact, I expect to be very positive for the City of Waihele, particularly based on some of the confidential data that the state helpfully provided for us to look at in terms of valuations. So from a financial risk perspective, it's a very low-risk decision for the council, in my opinion. I think it will have a positive financial impact on council's key performance indicators. I just can't say that with absolute certainty till I know the number, and then we can build that in. But I'm very confident, based on what I've seen, that it will be a largely positive financial experience. The, it will also, of course, unlock much greater value to the council and the region, which is very consistent with your strategic directions as a council and the region's plans. So I'm very comfortable as a prudential reviewer to say that, excuse me, even though there are matters that are not fully compliant, you've got enough information to make a decision. That was all I had to say, Justin. I don't think there are any questions.
Thank you, Mark. I might hold the questions until the end, and then we'll open up more questions generally. Lastly, just in terms of finalising the presentation of the report, I do want to just walk through the recommendations, just to confirm what the intents of the recommendations are. So item 1A is the note that requests received from the SA Hydrogen Power, dated 28th of October, to purchase or acquire the said parcels of land. 1B is to note the Minister of Local Government's exemption in terms of making a designated decision. Number two, notes the process outlined in this report to ensure that public value is obtained by council from the disposal of council land, including the procurement of independent valuation of land by the Vale General. The development of an initial term sheet to inform discussions with the state and drafting the options agreement, the review of the options agreement and engagements of both independent pravity and prudential auditor and legal advice. Number three, and the more important aspect is for council to authorize the CEO to negotiate amendments to and execute an option agreement for the disposal of land to the state of South Australia via a sale or lease to enable the SA Hydrogen Jobs Plan facility to progress. So I've just noticed that, that second part needs to be removed. So that second part, which is including the contract of sale, the line, that should be excluded, and I'll explain that now. So the intent of the options agreement is to provide the ability for the state to acquire the land at a future date, subject to conditions precedent, which is the receipt of the valuation. The actual contract of sale or contract of lease for one or a number of the portions of land that the state is looking at will be brought back to council at a later date, once the valuations have been received and a report is prepared regarding the value proposition of sale versus lease. Through the negotiations with the state, we anticipate that a separate option may need to be exercised by the state for the different portions at different times, so that we've got that optionality reflected within the options agreement. So these are the sorts of things that require just a little bit more work in terms of negotiating with the state. And then the final contract for sale and lease, which was the labour partners, that previous recommendation would be brought back to council at a later date, once the valuation is received. Number four is in authorizing the CEO to negotiate and execute an options agreement. The council notes the following. These are important, and why I wanted to just walk through them. Number one is the removal of the land and lease contract agreements from the annexes to the options agreement to ensure that council was not bound by these prior to the receipt of valuation or the state taking up the option. So those perils get removed from the options agreement. The definition of the option, the amendment to facilitate the options being taken up independently or as a whole, and the potential for a mix of either lease or sale for the different parcels. Again, that can be subject ultimately to council's decision as to which parcels you dispose of either via lease or sale. The provision of an escalation clause for the purchase price or rent, taking into account the term of the option agreement. So we'll receive an evaluation now. If it takes the state two and a half years before they exercise the option agreement, there should be an escalation clause in the valuation from today's date to two and a half years down the track. And a commitment from the state to pay any foregone rates due to legislative exemptions in the form of rates, let's see, or payments. In relation to that matter, there is an exemption under the Electricities Act for plants and equipment utilized for the purpose of electricity generation and storage to be exempt from capital valuations for the purpose of council rates. We want to make sure that the final instrument that is put in place between the council and the state doesn't result in the council not being able to secure rate revenue going forward. And again, that will be a matter that will need to be negotiated in the final contract of sale or lease down the track. Part B of that recommendation is for council to confirm that it chooses to dispose of land by negotiation and not by open tender, which is our normal practice, on the basis that the land is to be used for a purpose consistent with council's strategic objectives, as evidenced by council's previous resolution on the 29th of August 2022. The council determines that for the purpose of the land's transaction, only one independent valuation is required to be obtained as under the council's disposal of land and assets policy. In discussions with the state, it didn't make sense for the state to get and pay for a valuer, council to get and pay for a valuer, and then having two valuers debating what the valuation was. So we've agreed in advance the process where the Vale General will engage one valuer and both parties will accept that valuation for the purpose of the transaction. Next one is that council notes that the disposal of land will be at the current market valuation. Essentially, this options agreement is a legally binding decision for council disposal of land. What is undetermined at this point in time is what the final form of that disposal looks like, whether it's lease or, or sale, and what the final conditions of the contract of sale typically is. That the valuation as of today's date is, will be used for the purpose of the disposal. The council notes, the letter of collaboration, draft letter of collaboration that's been prepared will be finalised and jointly signed by the Office of Hydrogen Power SA and the City of Council. The council notes that it's received and noted the report from the independent pravity and prudential advisor, Mr Mark Booth from BRM Advisory, regarding council's processes and the determination of public value for the purpose of the disposal, which has just been discussed. Last two is that council authorizes the CEO to negotiate those amendments to and sign the letter of collaboration in order to provide council with the ability to contribute to the planning and coordination of the activities to support the development of our state's hydrogen industry, particularly in the broader region. And lastly, that council authorizes the CEO to instruct our lawyers to write to Adani Renewals advising that the land that had previously had subject to an agreement to lease is no longer available due to Adani not taking up the option to enter into an options agreement in relation to lease area number one, as per a previous resolution of council. So I will stop there and happy to now take questions from council.
Thank you, Justin. Councillor Marshall.
CEO, I just want, I thought that the Adani, I thought they've already been contacted because that resolution was quite some time ago. So I thought there would have been a formal letter already sent to them. Was there one sent to them at that time?
Yes, so immediately after council resolved to advise them that we would not continue to essentially roll over the agreement to lease that had been happening for some time, and that instead we wanted to put an options agreement in place. We wrote to Adani, asked them to confirm that they would take up an options agreement. We included in that options agreement the removal of the exclusivity clause that existed previously in the agreement to lease, similar to what we've done with other more recent negotiations. And the Adani have not taken up that option, nor met any of the conditions that we put to them. So there has been ongoing discussions with Adani, and the intent and purpose of this resolution is to provide final written confirmation that council no longer wishes to entertain any further discussions with Adani regarding this thing.
Councillor Knox.
My Councillor Marshall, I was going to ask about the potential legal action by Adani. That's been fixed now. One of the concerns that I have, I guess it's not a huge concern, but the Vale General did the valuation of the state, and we've asked the Vale General to recommend a valuer for us, for our valuation. I think we should have stayed at arm's length and not gone to the Vale General, we should have gone and got a valuation on our own without going through them. But it's not a huge, not a huge issue.
If I may, sorry councillor. So the valuations that the state previously used for the purpose of their negotiations with the seven companies was sourced in the same way, by, through the Vale General, but from an independent valuer. So we're not, we're not using Vale General valuation for the purpose of the determination of market value. We are seeking an independent valuer. The reason for using the Vale General is that they've got expertise in doing valuations and reviewing valuations. So instead of us just going to the figure of speech, to the white haters and looking for a valuer that may have relevant qualifications and experience, we've used the capabilities of the Vale General to determine who is suitable valuers. They've drafted the requests for quotes, which we've seen and we've approved. So for all intents and purposes, the Vale General is acting as agent on behalf of council to source that valuation from an independent valuer.
I get that, but I still think it should have been, they should have been at arm's length because there is no agency. The other thing is about page nine, per council rates, and I realise that's an ongoing equation. But I don't want to see us locked into something where we've got another Portnife or another Steelworks here that are in the rating system. So I think we should make sure down the track we do get some council rates out of it. And finally, it's a long time since I did year 12 English. But in 4B, we say confirms it, chooses. There should be confirms, choose, chooses is past tense, and for a living in the past, chooses is future tense. If I read my role, it's a long time ago since I did it.
Any questions? Right, thank you. Thank you. Have we had any other questions, many of the councillors? Okay, well then, it is now 5:58, so we're just about to finish our 30-minute suspension of meeting procedures. So I will now, as there are no more questions, we'll go back into all meeting procedures. So I would ask for someone to move that, please. Councillor Mark, sorry, in there, Stone. Second to councillor Knox. Thank you, show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, that's carried. Right, we're back now into all meeting procedures, and we will go to item 4.1.1. Is there no more discussion or presentation in regards to this particular recommendation? We will now formally move this. Councillor Knox, are you moving the recommendation? Thank you. And Councillor Marshall, you're seconding it. Excellent, thank you. No more discussion, debate. I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried, that's it. Right, moving on. Page 108, 4.2.1. Thank you. The recommended station is there. Catherine, would you like to speak to that? We'll take that as being read.
I think it's being read.
Thank you. Would someone like to then move the recommendation?
Ask a question, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. The question is, have we spoken to Qantas about the situation? Are they aware?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. So we're waiting for a response from Qantas, noting that we might be the only airport in a similar situation which is likely to affect a number of routes that Qantas currently services. So we are awaiting a response from them in terms of what their position may be in relations as well.
And, and to add to that, there's also discussions with the other airports as well in regards to this particular issue. So it's not just isolated from how, so it's an ongoing discussion. Concerns others, not from ourselves. All right, thank you. Uh, councillor Simpson?
You've got a question, it's a, or a statement, you know, fact that it couldn't have been more, but it's hardly incredibly worse for this to happen with the funding, with our plans for the future. You know, I just feel it's the government that we're down with.
The advocacy will continue without any doubt in regards to this particular issue.
Just for clarity, so that, so the grant is only until March.
And it's not at this point?
At this point, that's right. So this does look a bit of a, yeah, plant.
Just, just to prove it for the minute, this, we refer to this as top-up funding. We've received some top-up funding. We have been given verbal indications that we might get a little bit more of funding, that there's no certainty to that just yet. And that's from the existing funding allocation that the, the former government had in the budget. Come thirty for June, there will be fourteen airports around Australia that should have no ongoing funding for, to cover the cost of security spreading.
It's been imposed by.
It's been imposed, absolutely. It needs to be, to advocate, obviously, the responsibility. Obviously with a large group of other towns affected, hopefully that will have a, a good impact on discussions with the federal. Right, okay. Thank you. I'd ask for someone to move this recommendation, please. Thank you, councillor Marshall. Seconded councillor Simpson, thank you. Have a show of hands, always in favour. Thank you, that's carried. Right, we now go to four point two point two. The League of Some Lease for Copperhouse Court to help the hand aged care incorporated. Now, did any of the staff want to speak to this? It's fairly straightforward or you're taking it as being read?
It's very shameful.
Councillor Knox?
Just a couple of questions, I guess a statement too. We should not, shouldn't, shouldn't lose sight of the fact that these businesses operate, they operate as a business. They got very well-paid executive staff. The money that was put into setting up higher aged care in the past came from the allies grant from council. It came from funding arranged within the community and also came from government grants. And a few people have raised it with me, that, you know, what happens to our money? It's our money invested, that, blah, blah, blah. I understand the issues with aged care. I was for a number of years the chair of the board of higher aged care, long before Kindred Living though. So, and so I'm quite happy that we handed over to them. But I'm just, I want to emphasise the fact that it is that ownership in the community. If we did this, we should have some ownership in it. I don't think that's certainly going to happen, but what I would like to see happen, and I don't know what the opportunities for this are, in handing over the lease, yes, I guess we've got to, we want to get the community to get the sort of, as soon as possible. But I think down the track, we need to have some sort of a lease with some aspirational targets in it. We shouldn't just sit back and say, here's the lease code. I think we need to say, we want what we want, our, our property to be used for these purposes. We want to see growth in those purposes. We want to see it developed and not just continue. And at the end of the day, too, we'd like to know what the range is.
Have you?
If, just in response to that last comment, you will have noticed in the report and also in the deed of assignment that we have included a clause around reviewing the current lease to bring it into a contemporary state. And certainly as part of bringing it into a contemporary state, will be discussions around how do we set some strategic objectives in this lease and therefore start to look at the achievement of community outcomes whilst, I mean, the provision of aged care services is a, is a community outcome in and of itself. And how is it that through council's asset that we can actually leverage further strategic community outcomes? And so that will certainly be part of the discussions in terms of the lease. All lease fees of this nature are dictated by council's schedule of fees that it adopts on an annual basis as part of the annual business plan and budget process. This lease is deemed a community lease and so it's actually quite a, a small lease fee, which is articulated in the fees and charges schedule. Again, that is something that, that needs to be looked at. However, in terms of the lease, we are, this existing lease is for another ten years. And so any changes to the lease will need to be by agreement because we do have obligations under these terms and conditions of this lease that there is. But we will certainly seek, as we move to bring it into a contemporary position, we will seek to actually get improvements in that lease.
Absolutely.
A question? Yeah, I, perhaps I didn't read it well now, but I, I wasn't aware of the ten years. I just thought it was a roll over of an existing lease. Given that now we're saying it's going to be ten years, putting aspiration tags, etcetera, into a document would, would be somewhat difficult.
In turn, this is a deed of assignment. It is not a new lease. And so it is assigning an existing lease, which has another ten years actually on it.
On the current lease.
On the current lease, yes.
But isn't that true? I know that, you know, I think it's very important that you get regular presentations for the new operators and obviously I think they are very active and wanting to do well on that stage. And I'm sure they'll be open to discussions with the, with the new council, questions and expectations. I think that you.
And helping hand in the discussions that we've had with them over the last couple of weeks are very keen to ensure that it is a contemporary relationship in place. And so I have no doubt that, that they will agree to introducing through bringing contemporary arrangements in place, some strategic targets.
Okay, councillor Pond?
Yeah, I'd just like to say the reports that we've been given and the information and updates has been amazing through, um, sorry, my blank on their name, Helping Hand. We didn't get any information previous to them taking over. And I think it's, yeah, very settling and knowing that they're on the right track and they're actually putting effort into it. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, so are there no more questions? Right, thank you. I think we've made some good points for the, the council moving forward to in regards to this particular recommendation. Okay, so I'd like someone to move it, please, if that would be so. Thank you. Councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Pond. Thank you. No, a show of hands, three. Thank you. It's carried councillors. Excellent, thank you very much. Right, there are no confidential items and I will now declare this meeting closed at six oh nine PM. Thank you.